I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen in meeting to order for Tuesday evening, June 30th, 2020. We're starting our meeting a half hour early this evening because our colleagues on the Advisory Committee will also be taking up items on the Board's agenda for this evening, and that's helpful to them. To start, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone on the line is recording the meeting, please identify yourself right now by either raising your hand or announcing yourself. Okay, seeing none. To start out, we'd like to welcome Selectman Bill Ramsey. Bill, I didn't know before that the Board started its business if you wanted to have anything to say. I know we're awful glad to have you here. We're looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mary. I just wanted to thank the community for giving me this opportunity to serve on the Board. It's truly an honor and I'm looking forward to working with you, Joe, Tom, Michelle, and everybody in town. It's something that I think it's going to be an exciting opportunity and I look forward to working hard for the people of Hingham. So, thank you, Mary.
Okay. Joe, anything to add?
I thought custom was that the newest Selectman would supply the food for the opening meeting. Bill?
I'm waiting.
Yes, I did. Yeah, it's coming in an Uber. It's coming in.
Nothing on my doorstep yet, Joe.
Did you check your doorstep, Mary?
And one of my children is actually working for one of those delivery services, so.
Excellent.
First item of business on the agenda is the approval of the minutes dated June 10th. Joe, I had a chance to look at, I think, minutes that reflected all the edits. I'm ready to act on these minutes if you are.
I am. So, I'd like to move to approve the minutes dated June 10, 2020.
Okay. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill, would you like to abstain on these minutes?
Yeah, I'll abstain on the minutes. Obviously, I didn't participate in this, so thank you, I'll abstain.
Okay. And Mary? Aye. Okay. Next item of business is the reorganization of the Board. As people can see, Karen Johnson has rolled off the Board, given that she was acting as Chair. One of the first items on our business is the reorganization of the Board.
So, Mary, I would like to take the opportunity to nominate you, Mary Power, to serve as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Are you willing to accept?
I am. Is there a second?
There is a second, Mary, and I'm looking forward to having you as our Chair this year.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor. And Bill, we have to do a roll call vote on everything, so, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to a good year. The next item of business on the agenda is the review and approval of interdepartment, intradepartment, and reserve fund transfers for FY 2020. Today is the last day of the fiscal year, and this is a typical process we go through. Sue Nickerson is here to walk us through those transfers. And Sue, every year when you do this, we typically ask if you just give a little background on the reserve fund process, what we're kind of doing here, what's the difference between an inter and an intradepartment transfer. It just might be helpful to have a little context before we go through all of the different items that you're asking the Board to act on tonight.
Sure. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Terrific. Okay. Reserve fund transfers. The reserve fund is like a department. We appropriate, this year was $611,500 for unanticipated emergency for any department. We've only had one so far this year. It was for Lynch Field. We had a lightning strike on the irrigation system, and you guys and Advisory approved up to $10,000 reserve fund transfer. We only used a little less than $6,400. So, right now, as of right now, we have $605,104 in the reserve fund. Tonight, I have four reserve fund transfers for a total of $596,300, which will give us a little bit of a surplus left over to go to the general fund of $8,804. I have three interdepartment transfers. Now, interdepartment transfers are transfers between one department to another department. Chapter 44, I don't remember what section, I didn't bring that home with me, allows the Town, the last two months of the fiscal year, to transfer a surplus from one department to offset a deficit of another department. The last kind of transfer is an intradepartment transfer, and that is a transfer in between a department, between salaries to expenses, expenses to salaries. Or if one department head has three departments, he can transfer money between the three different departments, like police. Police had, actually, they have one here. Police can do, from police to animal control, or DPW can do DPW to landfill.
Okay. Thank you. And so, Sue, based on what you've said and the information you've sent, what we're really essentially doing here is reallocating money. At the end of this fiscal year, the Town has lived within its budget. We haven't spent our budget, bottom line.
Bottom line, no. We have not spent our budget, and after these transfers, we still anticipate closing money to the fund balance.
Right. Which will be helpful for our FY '21 financial management plan.
It certainly will.
Joe or Bill, do either of you have any questions just about kind of what we're doing in general before Sue walks us through each of the individual transfer requests?
Mary, I just want to add a little context that helped me, and it's actually in the annual Town warrant with respect to the reserve fund. I'm going to read from it. It says, "Mass General Law provides for annual appropriations to a reserve fund from which transfers for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures may be made from time to time with the advice of the Board of Selectmen and the approval of the Advisory Committee. The reserve fund is used to save the time and expense of a special Town meeting for relatively low-cost items. Per the Town Financial Policy, the annual appropriation amount for the reserve fund should be approximately 0.75% of the operating budget." And I've confirmed that, in fact, what we have here is, I think, a little less than 0.75% of the operating budget. So, we're operating consistently with Mass Law and with the Town Financial Policy.
Thank you. Sue, how about if maybe we'll let you walk through these? And I think we probably, after we do each one, will stop and do a vote. That way, if there's anybody participating in the meeting who has a question or a comment they can ask. So, why don't you walk us through and let us know where you'd like to start?
Okay. Well, why don't we start with the reserve fund transfer? Page one of everybody's packet was an Excel spreadsheet of what I do every year when we do the reserve funds. We start with the appropriation of $611,500. I subtracted any reserve fund transfers that have been approved, and now we're going to have some pending reserve fund transfers. The first one is for legal services. It's in the amount of $509,125. To pay for the legal costs for the rest of the fiscal year, any issues related to water in COVID-19 are expected to be reimbursed early next fiscal year, and that will go to fund balance next year.
Okay. Joe, did you have any questions for Sue on this one?
Yes, and this is asking for a ballpark estimate of the $509,000 that's going to be transferred. Do you have a sense of the percent or the dollar amount that's likely to be reimbursed?
Well, actually, yes. Sharon provided everybody with a breakdown of legal expenses. Water represents $231,542, and COVID represents $30,764. Water is 35%, and COVID is 5%.
So, that's the amounts and the percent that even though we're doing the transfer now, we're expecting it to come back into the Town?
Next fiscal year, yes. And it'll go right to fund balance.
Yep. Great. Thank you. No other questions.
Bill, did you have any questions about this one?
I just had one question, and I got the information on the legal budget. I'm not sure if this is for you, Sue, or Tom, but on the line, it was a legal budget. It was a category under general. I was wondering what typically falls under the general costs?
So, that's our general counsel. That is John Coughlin. So, the others, Susan Murphy and the others. John does, Mary, everything else that's not litigation, land use, and yeah, so he does. He does what's left.
Open OML guidance, things like that. So, it's the general counsel cost. Got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Yep.
And I think one of the things that Sharon also provided to the Board earlier today was kind of a three-year look at the legal expenses. And actually, when you back out the water and the COVID, legal expenses are actually down this year relative to the last couple of years, which I think is significant. This is an item that people may recall, we budget every year, but we've been saying for a few years, there's a structural deficit here. We're consistently underbudgeting it. Is there anyone on the line who has a question or would like to make a comment with respect to the legal reserve fund transfer? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the Selectman Legal Services account in the amount of $509,125.
And I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you. Sue, what's next?
The next one is for the Social Country Club for $50,000. Due to the pandemic, the country club was closed and no revenue was coming in. The projected revenue loss was close to $200,000. Since reopening, the shortfall has decreased to approximately $50,000. And I hope Kevin is on the line if you have any questions.
I am on the line, Sue.
Yay! Thank you.
Welcome. Joe, any questions about this one?
I do. So, the country club is an enterprise fund, and I had understood that the Town would basically be shielded from needing to fund the country club. Is there a process where the Town is likely to recoup the $50,000 that is now being transferred?
Tom, is this a question for you or for Kevin?
I'm happy to take it.
So, I could probably, Tom, if I could just...
Go right ahead.
Kind of go over. Yeah, so, we have a, we've had revenue of $30,000, you know, so we're kind of finishing the year strong. Obviously, we did miss, you know, all of, most of March, or a significant part of March in April. So, I do expect that the $50,000, it will be less than that. I think when they asked, we just wanted to make sure that we were safe. There's some charges that we're anticipating on coming in, like unemployment, Medicare expenses, credit card services, all those things come in after, you know, the fiscal year for the month that will get paid out. So, we do expect it to be less, but my understanding is, and Sue can correct me if I'm wrong, that essentially that there is a balance, the country club will all the time...
You're breaking up on us.
I'm sorry.
Kevin, if you could repeat that last...
Are you out playing golf? Is that what's going on, Kevin?
I wish. I'll take off speaker, I apologize. So, the country club, my understanding of how it will work, and Sue can correct me if I am wrong, but the country club in the end would pay back, you know, the $50,000, if there is $50,000, would pay that back when we do have, you know, when we do have positive years.
And that is correct.
Yep.
Once they get their fund balance up and running, they will start returning money back to the Town.
Thank you. I have nothing else.
Bill, any questions on the country club reserve fund transfer?
No questions, just only comment. You know, it's probably anticipated with the late start to add to the season, so hopefully they can have a lot of golfers there and turn things around.
I just have one question for, it's probably for Tom and Michelle, but as we think about the different ways that we are getting reimbursed for COVID-related expenses, is there a possibility down the road that these might be eligible for reimbursement in some way?
Probably not the bulk of them. I'll have to look at the details, but my understanding is most of this is lost revenue, and the CARES Act is not replacing lost revenue.
Okay. You know, I would also say that, just before taking a motion, prior to the pandemic, the country club was actually running a surplus, which I think is a tribute to Kevin, to Kevin's team, and the Country Club Management Committee. When, in May, when we were putting together the financial management plan, we were anticipating that the loss could be, as Sue mentioned, up to $200,000. Again, I would say that Kevin's stewardship, the great effort by his team, the Greenside Grill in trying to be creative and keep running, and the Country Club Committee has managed a very difficult situation, and I think we're all very grateful for that. So, Kevin, please pass on our thanks to your team, and thank you. We know this hasn't been an easy few months for you.
Well, thank you. I like to, I appreciate all the support from the Selectmen in the Town Hall as well, and Tom, but, you know, and I hope that the news is actually better than the 50. I anticipate that the final number will be better.
Thank you. Anyone, anybody participating would like to ask a question or make a comment? Seeing none, I take a motion.
Bill, do you want to alternate with me? Take this one?
I'm happy to do it, Joe. I'd recommend we transfer, to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to Social Country Club in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Back to you.
The next one is Town Meeting in the amount of $20,000. This is to pay for the outdoor Town Meeting due to COVID-19, and will be reimbursed early next fiscal year.
Joe, any questions?
What Town Meeting? Did we have? No, I was just, I already expressed previously to Sue my surprise that this number is as low as it is.
Well, you'll find out in the next little block that we have another one.
Okay, because it was just so much work was put into that Town Meeting, so I've got no questions on this. Thank you.
Bill?
I have no questions, just a comment. I thought it was very well done, well executed, given the circumstances. It was really a great effort to keep everybody safe and to make that happen.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I take a motion.
I move to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to Town Meeting expenses in the amount of $20,000.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
The next one is Information Technology in the amount of $17,175, and this is for contract renewal and overtime for COVID-19, which the COVID-19-related issues will be reimbursed.
Okay. Joe, any questions for Sue?
No, I've gone over this with both Sue and Tom, and I'm satisfied with the number.
Okay. Bill?
No questions.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I take a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to Information Technology salaries in the amount of $17,175.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
The next set are interdepartment transfers, and two of them are coming from the surplus that we will have in group insurance, and this will go to property and liability insurance in the amount of $58,320. And this is for, premium was increased due to substantial claims from fire and flood of two schools.
Joe, questions?
Yeah, so, this is money that's coming from the group insurance category, and this is going to apply, my question applies to this as well as the next one, is how much money do we have available in that group insurance category to fund the $58,320 and then the additional $50,000 for unemployment?
I expect a surplus in group insurance of about $200,000, and these two will take half.
Great, so there's clearly adequate funding to handle this.
Adequate, yes.
Yes. I've got no other questions.
Bill?
I'm sorry, and so you said this was for a fire and a flood? Was that, was that fire at the high school in the last fall?
Yes.
Okay. What was the flood?
East, the east school.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Nothing else.
You're welcome.
And Sue, we, for FY '21, these increases were reflected in the FY '21 budget, so this, we will not have this issue next year?
Yes, we will.
We will have an issue or we won't?
Yes, no, we will, because our, when we did the budget, our renewal was not even up for discussion. We just, we just started the renewal process.
Okay. So, for FY '21, do we have a sense of how much we're under budget for that?
Actually, I don't have it in front of me. Yes.
Okay. You know, one thing, maybe if we could, after the meeting, if you could just let Tom and Michelle and the Board know what that's like, because we're going to need to kind of figure out a way to offset that during next year.
Okay.
Okay. And Sue, just to, could you just please explain for the benefit of the Board and for people who are watching the meeting, why do we sometimes have group insurance surpluses at the end of the year?
Well, when we do the budget, since we've gone to the GIC, there are 12 different plans that every employee and/or retiree can choose, and a wide range of premium costs. We have two open enrollments, one in the spring for all active retirees, and then one in the fall when any new teachers come aboard. It is very hard. What I do is I take the most recent month and apply that number of people to the different plans and try to figure out the increase. When open enrollment comes, a lot of people either, if the rates go up too much, go on to their spouses, and with attrition, if we lose people on a family plan, we might get people on a single plan. So, there are so many variables, it is very hard to forecast a budget.
Thank you. Anyone in the public have a question or would like to make a comment on this reserve fund, on this transfer? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I move to recommend an interdepartment transfer to property and liability insurance from group insurance for $58,320.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
The next one is unemployment for $50,000 coming from group insurance. This is to cover the cost of unemployment for June 30th. The Department of Unemployment has been overloaded with claims. Invoices from March through June have not been received. So, this might be a little high, but it might not be. We have been inundated with unemployment claims. Some are fraudulent, there's no way to tell what those bills will be. So, on a safe, I took the highest month that I've had during the year and multiplied it from March to June, and that's what I'm asking for a transfer.
And just to be clear, Mary, the unemployment claims are high because of the COVID pandemic and the general economy issues. Just, that's what's driving it.
And I believe we can get reimbursed for some of these, too.
Okay. Tom or Sue, could you just, you know, I think people are aware that the Town has not taken any steps, unlike other communities, to furlough, but we do have some people who are eligible for unemployment. Could you just give examples of positions that we're seeing being filed for unemployment?
I would say 90% of them were school employees, and I'm not, I don't know if it's for Kids in Action, or, you know, Drive His Ed, or some of those types of positions. On the Town side, we had recreation kids.
Okay. Joe, any questions for Sue?
Just to really emphasize what Sue said about fraud, there's been incredible amount of fraud at the state level with respect to unemployment claims. There was a fraud on me. Someone submitted an unemployment claim in my name as well, and I got a notice from the state saying that there's, they're being inundated with fraudulent unemployment claims. So, hopefully, this number will go down as they sort through the fraudulent claims. I've got no other questions.
Bill?
I have no questions.
Okay. And Sue, we are self-insured for unemployment.
Well, we're not, it's not self-insured. We are a reimbursor.
Okay.
So, what happens is whatever the employee collects, we pay the state.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, anyone in the public wish to ask a question or make a comment on this transfer?
Excuse me, is Carol Meyer? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the amount.
Carol, the...
$50,000.
$50,000.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
That's five zero. Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make the motion. I will make a motion to recommend an interdepartment transfer to unemployment from group insurance for $50,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
The last interdepartment transfer is for Town Meeting. It is to be transferred from Town Engineering salaries to Town Meeting expenses, and this is to pay for indoor Town Meeting audiovisual system set up in case of rain, plus additional expenses for outdoor Town Meeting tents. And Joe, to your point, I missed this one, so that's why we have to do another one.
This is another one. I got it. And if I could just ask, how much do we have in reserve for the Town Engineering salaries to cover this?
Town Engineering salaries had a surplus of $200,000.
Okay, so we're more than enough to cover this?
More than enough. I wouldn't put another department in deficit, so.
Okay.
We have plenty of money.
And I would just note, that's a one-time, very unusual...
Oh, one time, yes.
Yes.
That, yeah. Bill, any questions on this request?
The only question, Sue, you said this was for the backup operation indoor, inside the gym?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Bill, we referred to this as Plan C. We were prepared... We were prepared for this meeting.
I mean, it'd be used.
Me too.
Uh, anyone in the public have a question or comment on, uh, on this transfer request? Okay, uh, I'd accept a motion.
I move to recommend an interdepartmental transfer to town meeting expenses from engineering salaries for nineteen thousand dollars.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Now we're going into the intra department transfers. That's from within one department. The first one is from fire department salaries to expenses of forty thousand dollars. Due to COVID-19, we have had to order additional PPE and other decontamination equipment that were not in our budget. Specifically, we spent an additional six thousand dollars and had pending expenses equalling another thirty-four thousand. We anticipate that we'll be able to be reimbursed for all of this through the CARES funding or other reimbursement programs. And I know the chief is on the line if anybody has any questions.
Okay, Joe?
No, I've gone over this with Sue, and I'm comfortable, no questions.
Bill?
I have no questions.
Okay, uh, I've also gone through this. I just, uh, while, while we have the benefit of the chief on the line, uh, just want to thank him for his exceptional leadership, uh, particularly over the last few months. So we, uh, we, we appreciate everybody. We appreciate his effort and the efforts of, of all the men and women in the Fire and Emergency Management Department. Any, uh, members of the public have a question or comment on this transfer request? Uh, if not, I take a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend an intradepartmental transfer from fire salaries to fire expenses, ambulance supplies for forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is the town engineer salaries to expenses in the amount of sixteen thousand six twenty-six. This is to cover expenses during the reorganization and requiring reporting to DEP, which is the Department of Environmental Protection for the Whitney Wharf Redeemiation Project. And I think Randy is on the line. If not, Michelle is also available to answer any questions.
Okay, Joe?
If, if someone could just explain in a little more detail what those expenses were, that would be helpful to me.
Sure, some of them, um, so as you know, we had, we did not have many, um, employees in that office due to the reorganization of the engineering department. And we ended up contracting with a number of engineering consultants to help us get us through that time until we could hire a new town engineer. Um, in addition, what you see here is also required reporting to the DEP um, in relation to some contaminated soil that we found at the, um, near Whitney Wharf Park, um, last year when we were doing a state project to reinforce one of the war, um, harbor walls right there.
Great, thank you. I've got nothing else.
Bill, any questions?
Nothing, no additional questions.
Okay, uh, members of the public question or comment on, uh, this transfer request? Okay, uh, I'd accept a motion.
I move to recommend an intradepartmental transfer from engineering salaries to engineering expenses for sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is for the police department. Transferring from salaries to expenses in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Purchase of COVID-19-related items, signboard rentals, PPE equipment, and other related items. And I know the chief is on the line, so if you have any questions.
Joe?
So, um, just picking up on a theme from before, uh, to what extent are we likely to be reimbursed for this ten thousand dollar transfer?
Uh, I would say most of it is COVID-related.
So that means reimbursable?
Yeah.
Great.
Yes, we, we don't, we never know for sure, Joe. There is a, there is an auditing process, uh, for the county and ultimately the government, the federal government, but yes, we believe that this is, um, reimbursable expense.
Okay, thank you. I got nothing else.
Bill?
Uh, just a comment, I wanted to commend, um, both, uh, public safety departments for the work they did, uh, during the, you know, the onset of the pandemic and, um, the risk they took going to work every day. A lot of us were, you know, running, you know, staying at home safely, and our public safety employees are out there working hard, and I just want to express my appreciation for what they did and what they're continuing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, questions or comments from, uh, anyone in the public? Okay, seeing none, I take a motion.
Uh, Mary, Joe, I'm going to abstain on this one because it involves police salaries. And my brother is a police officer, so I'm gonna sit this one out, Joe, if you can make a motion, I'll abstain.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so I recommend an intradepartmental transfer from police salaries to police expenses in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstention.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is for human resource. From sa- salaries to expenses in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is how, to help, um, pay for the construction of the HR and benefits office in Town Hall.
Joe, questions?
Um, no, I, I went over this with Sue and Tom before, I'm comfortable with this.
Bill?
No questions.
No questions, I learned about it as well, comfortable with it.
Okay, uh, questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I take a motion.
I'd make a motion to recommend an intradepartmental transfer from human resources salaries to human resources expenses in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, we're down to two more. Uh, the next one is for animal control, salaries to expenses in the amount of four thousand three hundred dollars. And this is for required update of equipment, a Motorola, Motorola digital radio and a laptop computer. Estimated cost for both of them is forty-three hundred dollars. And I know the chief is still on the line, so if you have any questions.
Okay, uh, Joe, any questions?
Um, yes, and this is, I'm not sure if this is for the chief or for, um, an accounting, as an accounting question. Uh, because I, I had always thought that animal control was within the police. Uh, but I see that it's separated out from the police expenses, so I'm just wondering
It's a separate, it's a separate department.
Uh, but it's report, it reports to, uh, the chief of police, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, from what I've heard among, uh, members of the community, animal control is doing a superb job. Uh, so thank you, uh, for that effort, and I've got, uh, no other questions.
Bill?
I also did not know it was a separate department. Uh, but I echo what Joe said in terms of our animal control officer. Uh, she is everywhere around town, very visible. She's also very responsive to the concerns of citizens on pinboards when a coyote is seen or an animal is hurt, and um, just want to thank her for all she does, nothing else.
Uh, couldn't agree more. Any, uh, questions or comments from the public on this request? Um, Bill, are you, uh, would you prefer to abstain on this, or are you, uh, okay to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend an intradepartmental transfer from animal control salaries to animal control expenses in the amount of four thousand three hundred dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, last one. The town accountant's office from expenses to salary in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, the reason that, uh, a salary step was not accounted for in the budget.
Uh, Joe, questions?
Uh, yes, so this is, of all the transfers, this is the only one where it's going from another category to salaries, so I just want to make sure that we've got adequate funds in the expense category to handle this transfer, and I believe we have about five thousand dollars available to cover the twenty-eight sixty-five?
That is correct.
Uh, then I'm satisfied, got no other questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Uh, questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I take a motion.
I move to recommend an intradepartmental transfer from town accountant expenses to town accountant salaries in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Um, Sue, uh, thank you so much. You know, every year, it's always, um, there's always a lot of moving parts at the end of the year, and given that we just had a town meeting and everything with COVID, there's a lot of effort involved in getting all this together, and, um, you know, thank you for, uh, not only making sure that we're, you know, getting all these things in order, but also the summary that you're prepared to sort of walk through where things are is, um, is very helpful. Um, I just, I have one procedural question, which is, um, do I need to sign these transfer requests?
Gee, that was going to be my question to you. Um, I don't know how you guys want to do this. Um, I know Karen, you assigned her that she could do it in, you know, uh, via email. Um, I have all the originals, so I'm happy to leave them in the selectman's office if you want to come in and sign up on them.
I can, I can come in tomorrow and sign them. I just, I wasn't sure how time-sensitive it was.
Oh, no, because you, you've already approved them, they're in the minutes. Um, and I won't be in the office until next Monday.
Okay, um, if, if you would leave them, um, I'm happy to do that. I don't know how you're going to do that with the advisory committee.
That's my, that's my next meeting, and that's all I'm going to ask Victor.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Hey, it's the votes, it's the, the record of the vote that matters, and the signature can be retroactive to this date.
Exactly, thank you.
Um, thank you so much.
Thank you, on to my next meeting.
On to your next one.
Thank you.
Happy fourth.
You too.
Thank you.
Um, so the next item on our agenda is to adopt the Board of Selectmen Code of Conduct, and um, just as, as context for the audience, um, in two thousand fifteen, uh, the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee, uh, created, or they actually recommended that the Board of Selectmen adopt a Code of Conduct. And, uh, so we actually asked them if they would prepare it, and this bylaw committee, uh, was comprised of Nelson Ross, Tom Carey, David Pace, Charlie Cristello, and Karen Johnson. Um, and they did, and they did an excellent job. The Code of Conduct, uh, apparently there was one Nelson had mentioned at the time. There was one that was established in two thousand seven that somewhere along the line, in his words, disappeared. And the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee at the time recommended that the board adopt it. They, they kind of viewed it as a set of standards or the rules of the road. And while it's not required that the board adopted every year, um, back in two thousand seventeen, when we had a new board member, uh, the board actually just voted to reconfirm it. Um, Tom and I thought that it would be a good idea to do that as well. Um, this is a document that is actually on our website, it's on the Board of Selectmen page, so uh, I'm not going to read a five-page document. Um, but I, I would just say that it, um, I know for me, every time I read it, it just sort of reaffirms, uh, the role that the board has. I think it underscores the responsibility we all have, and I always find it's really helpful in, um, helping delineate kind of roles. Um, you know, Bill, Joe's, Joe's heard me talk in the past, they talk a lot about people kind of staying in their lane. And I think the Code of Conduct really helps, you know, I, I've found that it's been helpful to me in terms of what my lane is, what the lane of the board is. Um, in particular, talking about the Board of Selectmen setting policy, the administration carrying it out. It's, uh, I just think it's a very well-written, very comprehensive, uh, document. Um, I, I don't know, Joe or Bill, if either of you have any comments about the code that you wanted to make? Uh, Joe, maybe I'd start with you?
I, I've read the code. One thing that's lacking, um, that I'm not sure we need to address now is an acknowledgement of the important role that the Assistant Town Administrator plays. Uh, Michelle is, is invaluable. With, there's, there's a lot of verbiage here in terms of relations with the Town Administrator. But at some point in the future, I, I'd like to amend this document to really reflect the importance of the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, to the Board of Selectmen, because she really is invaluable. Other than that, um, I, I think it might be helpful, Mary, just to read the concluding paragraph of the Code of Conduct, because I think it encapsulates what Bill began to say at the beginning of the meeting and what you said at other meetings. Um, I'm just going to read it if, if that's okay.
Please.
"It is truly a privilege to serve as a member of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Hingham. You, the citizens of the town, have placed your faith in us to serve in the best interests of the entire community. This code is an expression of our expectations of one another and serves as our promise to you that we will strive to the best of our abilities to fulfill our duties as a board in accordance with the highest standards of governance set by our predecessors since the founding of Hingham in sixteen thirty-five." Uh, it really encapsulates the spirit and the substance of, of, of this Code of Conduct, uh, and I fully endorse it.
Thank you, Bill?
You know, on the planning board, we had a Code of Conduct as well, it was a similar, uh, Code of Conduct, and I think it's a good thing to have. I would also second Joe's, um, Joe's comment about acknowledging the great work of our Assistant Town Administrator in addition to our Town Administrator, uh, and I liked that paragraph too, about sixteen thirty-five, Joe, when I read it, read this over, I thought that was great. I did have one question for you.
You were, you were around back there, weren't you, Bill?
I might have been, you know. I, I did have one question for the both of you, um. When I was on the planning board, and I, I may have missed it reading the document, but when I was on the planning board, we directed, um, that, uh, the chair is the one that deals with, uh, official and formal media. And I'm not sure if that's a practice of, of this board. Mary, obviously you would know, um, Joe, you might as well. Do you, does, does the board, does the chair, um, solely deal with media and fielding questions? Or do all three members do it, or what, what are your thoughts on that?
Um, well, I, I would, I would answer based on experience, but I think this is something that, you know, we, we want to kind of decide for ourselves. I, I think there have been times in the past where, um, oftentimes the, the select, the select board member who is the liaison to something, is often the best able to speak to it. So, you know, like, you know, um, so, for example, last year, uh, with the water company acquisition, um, you know, that was something where oftentimes, as the liaison, um, I was probably the best informed to answer media questions. Um, I would envision those things might happen as we go through the year, and I, I always kind of kick back to the liaison thing. Um, what I would say I think is a good practice is that, um, and that, that I've done, learning kind of from Paul Healy, is that when there are media inquiries, I'm always informing Tom and Michelle of those. Um, sometimes it seems more appropriate for them to answer, but at a minimum, they're aware that I've responded so that they can convey that to the rest of the board, and also so they're not surprised. I, I don't know, Joe, if that kind of makes sense and jives with, with your experience?
It does, uh, when I've had inquiries, um, I will typically speak with Tom and just to see if he's received the same inquiry and whether or not, um, you know, who, who the right person is to respond. But I, I, I think we should also add that when we get, um, when we get inquiries from the press, um, because I think we have, uh, who do we, we have got Carol Meyer on the line. Uh, so she sometimes will reach out to us, uh, and ask either for clarification about what happened at a selectman's meeting uh, or on a particular issue, and, uh, often I feel that each of us are absolutely free to be responding to Carol.
Yeah.
Great, okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I would also say, you know, when in doubt, give, give Tom or Michelle a call. I think, I think their guidance on that is, um, is really helpful. I think the one thing we just want to avoid is, um, or what we want to strive for is, is one, is a I think the one thing we just want to avoid is, or what we want to strive for is, is one, is a single voice in the community.
Yep.
And, you know.
Yeah, and, and just, just to build on that, communication is important, and there's a problem if there's inconsistent communication. If we think that something's gonna, one person says something's gonna happen, another person says something's not gonna happen, confusion results, and that's why coordinating with Tom is usually the best practice.
Great. Thank you both.
Yep, okay. Any questions or comments from the public on the Board of Selectmen Code of Conduct? Joe, I, I agree with, with your recommendation, and I think, you know, I like this as sort of an annual process, particularly when the board is first kind of kicking off. So I think during the course of this year, we might want to just reflect that in the document so that, so that it reflects our current organization.
Okay.
Would either of you like to make a motion?
I think I'm up, so I'm happy to make it. I make a motion to reconfirm, reconfirm the Board of Selectmen's Code of Conduct.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business on the agenda is preliminary discussion of FY21 goals and objectives. And when, when Tom and I talked about this today, what, what we thought might just be helpful is to just sort of put some information out there, but ask us all maybe to do a little homework before our next meeting to have some conversation about our goals and objectives. You know, Bill, for, for, for your benefit, typically around this time of year, at the beginning of the fiscal year, the board tries to set its goals and objectives. And part of it is to, is to sort of make sure that we're focusing on and that we're aligned on where we want to work. And I think another part of it has often in the past been making choices, because, you know, there, there's no shortage of things that people would like us to do. What you see in the document that is, that Tom sent earlier this afternoon is really just an attempt to catalog everything that we're already doing right now, as well as items coming out of the FY20 town meeting that would touch, touch the board and touch the selectmen's office. So this is all kind of the existing things. And my thought was that, was that we could each take some time to review it and to provide feedback to Tom and Michelle on, you know, things that we want to keep doing, as well as items that are, that are not reflected here that we think should be. In terms of the organization, you know, I don't know, several years ago, we started kind of looking at the, the, the work of the board in the categories of fiscal sustainability, asset utilization, service delivery, and general welfare and stewardship. And, and just kind of found that those were kind of helpful categories under which to organize things. In addition, as, as Tom likes to remind us, there are also, in, in addition to other things we want to do as we get elected, there's also this thing called running the town of Hingham. And that, you know, we need to be mindful that for the selectmen's office, you know, the, the delivery of public services, it's a people-intensive business, so Tom and Michelle are, you know, involved in the people aspect of things. We are like, we are the licensing board. There are personnel management issues, responses to public inquiries. And, you know, all that is being challenged in unique ways right now because of COVID-19. So I, I think, as we're thinking about setting goals and things we want to accomplish, it's important for us to keep in mind the other demands on the, the selectmen office team, because many of those people we look to to help with some of our goals. So, you know, again, this is a, this is just an attempt to start to catalog where we are. Our goal discussion usually happens over the period of a couple of different meetings. I might just pause here and see if either of you have any questions or comments or thoughts about either the goal-setting process or the document that you got. And I, I do realize you only got it this afternoon, so apologies that you didn't get it sooner.
So, Mary, I actually, in advance of receiving the document, put together a list of goals that I had. I don't know if you want to have a discussion, a brief discussion now, or put that off till later.
Can, can I make a suggestion, Mary?
Sure.
And Joe, it, it, Bill, however you guys want to do this, but one option is that I make myself obviously available to the three of you whenever you want to, and we can walk through all the different ideas that you all have, because you're all gonna have various ideas, and is, is, I think the more we explore them, we might even identify the ways to, to perfect those ideas. And then, and then we can bring them to whatever board meeting we put it back on an agenda. But, you know, I, in my role, I have a, a fairly broad spectrum understanding of all of the different aspects of, of the things that are happening in the town. So I might be able to help facilitate some, some idea and crystallize it and, and bring it to, uh, bring it to fruition a little bit easier. But I, I just throw it out there, is I'm happy to do that, obviously.
Great.
Joe, I mean, do you, it doesn't matter to me, but Joe, if, if you wanted to even just kind of put those out there, not that tonight we can do a lot of discussion, but just maybe to kind of put them out there so Bill and I can start thinking about them?
Sure. So I came up with six goals that I think I'd like to be working on and hopefully get the, the board to be working on. And I'm sure you're already, you're already on board for many of these. So the first goal I have is to assure effective town government throughout this period of the COVID pandemic, which includes helping schools, senior citizens, and businesses adjust to the new norms that govern our conduct. The second goal I have is to address issues of racial equality and justice in our community, including working with the police department to assure appropriate sensitivity to racial and cultural issues. Third goal I have is to enhance coordination between the town administration and the schools to assure a proper allocation of resources. Number four is to ensure a smooth transition between private ownership and municipal ownership of the water company. Number five is to continue our growth in affordable housing. And number six, my last one, which is really personal to me, to get more bike paths in Hingham for the use and enjoyment of youth and adults.
Great. Yeah. I think you may see that, that some of those are, are, are captured on the, on the document you got released this afternoon, although I, I have to say, yours are much better written. Excellent. Bill, I don't know if you have any thoughts, reactions, questions?
Well, I, just a couple of comments. I, I only got a document just today, so I got a chance to look at it. And I like the fact that the board places the goals in different categories. I think that organizationally, I think that's a good way to do it. Joe, I agree with everything you listed there. So thank you for doing that. I think that, I think those are good goals and objectives of the board. My, you know, just thinking off the top of my head, my major goals and the kind of big-picture things are just to try to get our local economy reopen again, while keeping everybody safe and doing it. And bigger picture goal would be budget, in addition to the items listed by Joe. So that would be where I'm gonna start from, and I'll get more specific as I get a chance to review the document a little more and maybe speak to Tom.
Yep. Yeah, I, I, I agree with all of the different, all of the different concepts that have been put forward. And I think, you know, as, as we're all gonna be working with our colleagues in the school department and the advisory committee on the FY21 financial management plan, that's both gonna be an element of kind of fiscal stewardship and, and also a chance to potentially enhance the communication and the working relationship between, you know, municipal and, and the schools. I just throw one other one in there, which is kind of related to town meeting, but the facility work that, that, that we are embarking on in this year in terms of feasibility for public safety and for a senior center. And, and a big part of that is gonna be starting with us in conjunction with the moderator, appointing building committees for both of those things. I, I think, you know, the good news is that if we have a committee that's solely focused on that, it just means as, as a town, we've got more people working on things, we've got more capacity. It, it strikes me that with three committees being approved by town meeting this past year, plus the regular talent bank, a big part of our efforts in the first, you know, in the first couple months are going to be, to be appointing some of our fellow citizens to these roles. It's, you know, normally by now, we would have completed a lot of those interviews, so the, I, I think there's a little added pressure there, too, especially if we would like to, in the fall, ask town meeting to consider funding that facility. So. Okay, well, thank you. So here, here's what I'm gonna suggest is, if, if each of us can individually, you know, talk to Tom and Michelle about our thoughts, reactions, and then maybe Tom and Michelle, you can let us know when this is kind of ready to come back to the board for, for conversation. I, I think the other thing I'd kind of like to do with, with any of the goals we adopt is, is just kind of have some kind of a milestone or some kind of a way that we can, you know, kind of take a look at this in the fall or maybe in the winter and just kind of see how we're doing. If, if that, if that would be okay with you. Okay. Joe or Bill, anything else to add on this piece?
I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Any, anyone in the public have a question or comment about the goals? Okay, if not, we'll come to our next agenda item, and many thanks to the folks who have been on the line. This is the Memorial Bell Tower Ringing Components Restoration Project. That's a mouthful. Michelle, are you gonna, are you gonna just kind of introduce this to the board?
Sure, I can kick us off.
Thank you.
So, thanks, Mary. This is a contract between the town and B.A. Sunderland Bell Foundry, LLC, to restore the bell frames and other components on six of the 10 English change-ringing bells that hang in Hingham's Memorial Bell Tower right next to Old Ship Church. On the line, we have Andrea Young, our historic administrator, Martha Ryan, and Daniel Cushing, who are members of the Bell Tower Committee, and bell-ringing extraordinaires. I had the privilege of, of seeing the bell tower, climbing up there on the top and seeing the beautiful bells and wheels, and learning how to ring one of the bells under their guidance a few months ago. And the four of us have worked together as a team with town council to put this contract together. They've been working with Sunderland for many years to, to get this work completed. And they've sought CPC and Green Bush funding in two phases. So this is the second phase of the project. There's another contract we also have with Sunderland for work on the first four bells. The contractor is gonna do all, to do the work on all 10 bells at once to minimize the mobilization costs of the town, because they're located in Virginia. Sunderland Bell Foundry is actually kind of the only game in North America that's capable of doing this work. All of the bells and their components are over 100 years old. They were made as direct copies to the bells that hang in the bell tower in Hingham, England. And so the Bell Tower Committee and the ringers are really excited about getting to this point, being able to move forward with the work and, you know, undertaking these much-needed repairs that will hopefully result in, in a better ringing experience and making it easier to use and protecting this asset of the town for years to come. And we have received a signed copy of the agreement back from the contractor over the weekend. So that's where it stands. And Martha and Daniel and Andrea are really the experts here. So if there's any questions about the art of change-ringing and all the intricacies there, I will defer to Martha and Daniel in particular.
Okay, thank you. Joe, questions for Michelle or Andrea or Daniel or Martha?
Yeah, I'm not, I'll, I'll just put the questions out, and whoever thinks it's appropriate, please respond. I did note that this, this is a contract with a Virginia company. I just want someone's experience or comment about how easy it is or not to be working with an out-of-state firm on this kind of project.
I think I can answer some of it, and then maybe Martha and Daniel might want to jump in. This project is gonna be, the, the start of it is gonna be where Sunderland is manufacturing or fabricating some of the pieces off-site down there and sending us documentation that the pieces have been made. He's already been up a few times to take different measurements over the years, so he knows the tower quite well. But I'll let, if Martha or Daniel want to add anything.
There are probably maybe two other bell foundries in the world who could do this, and they're both located in England, so.
This is a lot more convenient.
Much, much more convenient, yes. At least he can drive.
Right, exactly. Would someone review the costs and how that's gonna work in terms of when invoices are submitted, when payments are done, and also the change order process, to the extent that there's likely to be modifications to the costs that are in the contract?
I believe the way we've set this up are with monthly invoices, but with some flexibility in case the contractor needs to be, needs to invoice on a more frequent basis. And with, as the town, we don't pay for services until they're rendered, so he, as he, there's no, you know, initial deposit or anything, but as he starts to fabricate materials and can provide evidence that this has been done, we will start to pay those invoices. In terms of the cost, what you see here is a maximum of about $106,000. There is a component in here of up to $30,000 for post-installation rope work. And that scope really won't be determined until the main restoration work is done. And that will really be the Bell Tower Committee in conjunction with or with input from the contractor, but we've set it aside that way so that, that, that extra money is built in, should that work be necessary. The total project for the, or total cost for this, $106,000, is within the budget that the Bell Tower Committee has between the CPC and Green Bush fund, so we do have a little bit of wiggle room should, should the costs go over budget, but this is the agreement that we came to with the contractor.
And am I correct that our town council has reviewed the contract and is satisfied with it?
Yes, John helped us do the invitation for bids in the fall, and then he reviewed all of the terms and the requested changes with the, the four of us before we went back to the contractor.
And you mentioned at the beginning that we received a signed version back from the contractor. That's not the version that we have. We have an unsigned version.
Correct. What I sent you on, or what the board received on Friday did not include that piece of it, but he did return it yesterday to us.
Okay. Oh, and who, who will be the point person or persons in Hingham that will be overseeing the work?
I think that will be split between Andrea Young, our historic administrator, and members of the Bell Tower Committee. There'll be several people checking in on the project, you know, as he's up here to complete the work.
Andrea, are you, are you on the line? Is she on the line?
Yes, I am.
Are you comfortable with overseeing the work?
Well, yes. You know, it's certainly not my forte. I would do that in conjunction with the other bell ringers, particularly Dan and Martha. But yeah, as a representative of the town, which is why I'm involved. And the District Oral Commission does have responsibility to maintain the bell tower. So that's, that's my involvement, and I'm, I'm fine. I can work with this guy.
Tom, do you anticipate the town engineer being involved, or that the engineering department being involved in this?
He's certainly available as needed. And I'd remind you, too, that we're, obviously, our office will be monitoring the, and Sue's, the status of the, of the contract and, you know, invoicing and all that.
Okay, and when this project is completed, will the selectmen be able to go down and ring the bells? We want to test them out.
As long as you don't make me climb up there. I'm not good with heights.
We want to test them out.
Glad to have you.
Great. I got no other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Bill?
You know, I, I remember watching the project move through the CPC funding cycle a couple of years ago, and I remember it going through the Green Bush mitigation cycle as well. It's great to see funding from those two sources. You know, the, the bell tower is one of those historical gems we have in town. We have many of them, but this is, this is a wonderful project. We have many of them, but this is, this is a wonderful project. You know, Andrea, thank you for all you do for our historical assets and components. And Martha and Daniel, thank you for volunteering to take this on.
Joe, we asked a couple of my questions, but I wondered if you could give me a sense of the timing of this work. When will it start? How long will it take? When is it expected to be completed?
In talking with the contractor, the contract has a timeline of eight months. And Martha and Daniel might be able to talk more about when he plans to get started, but it should be within the year, within those eight months.
He mentioned something about coming up in August to take measurements, and then he thinks he could, he's optimistic and hoping to be able to get it done by fall, but we've given them the eight months because he really needs the time. There's, there are all kinds of variables.
Okay, thank you. I really like the anatomy of a change ringing bell. I like that, you know, it's, it actually really kind of helps to see this, and you really get an appreciation that, you know, when you think about when these bells were put together, when this was all put in place, it's actually a real engineering feat. It's impressive. Like Bill, I've been on the board when you've come before, when you've come before us for CPC money, also for Green Bush money, so it's, it's nice to see this coming to fruition. I appreciate that you're working through John Coughlin because I think, you know, part of our job is to make sure that we're acting in the best interests of the town, and as the non-lawyer on the board, it helps me to know that, that, that John has been through this so carefully and that the terms and conditions are consistent with contracting best practices that he sees and that we set. I would just comment, Daniel, you've been doing this for 50 years?
I have. I was.
Amazing, amazing.
I was just a kid.
I, I would just say in closing that, you know, sometimes in Hingham, you sort of, you know, you hear the bells, but you don't think about kind of who rings them, what happens. And one of the great privileges of being involved in town government is that you become aware of groups of people who have stewardship over things that are part of the fabric of our community. And it's obvious when you've come into the board on different occasions that it's a really nice community of people. And I don't know if you maybe would have met one another had you not had this shared interest and commitment to ringing the bells, but it's just, it's just obvious that you enjoy each other, you enjoy what you're doing, and they're just so beautiful. So, you know, thank you for that. And this is, this is a big project to manage. And it's, you know, Andrea, thank you, and, and, you know, thank you, Martha, and Daniel for helping out because this is going to be some important work for the town. Anybody else have anything further, any further questions or comments before we take this to a vote?
I'd like to just thank everybody for your support, and especially with the contract, working with Michelle and Andrea. Your dedication and commitment to this has been so helpful, and we really, really appreciate that and the support of the whole town, as everyone has sort of reflected here, but it's been such a good experience for all of us, and we're just really excited about the project moving forward. So, thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
You're getting a ringing endorsement.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with B.A. Sunderland Bell Foundry, LLC for the Memorial Bell Tower Bell Ringing Components Restoration Project.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Was there a second?
Yeah, Bill's second.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Sorry.
Bill? Mary?
Aye.
Thank you all so much. We have one other before going to the COVID update, et cetera. We have one other possible vote. Tom or Michelle, could you just kind of walk us through what this is?
Tom, do you mind us?
Michelle, can you do this one? Or do you want me to do it?
I can't do it. Maybe Sharon can help out.
So I, so I can tell you that Sharon has been through everything, Mary, and the chief has signed off on what needed to be signed off on. Sharon?
Hi, this is Sharon. Hi, this is, hi, how are you? This is a common victual license to a establishment in the shipyard. The paperwork's all in order, and they can be approved.
Okay. Joe or Bill, any questions?
Just to background, because I had the question before. First, my first question was, how do you pronounce it? Is it victular? And so, under state, under state, under state law, every food service establishment with the capability for cooking, preparing, and serving food, and which provides seating for the immediate consumption of that food, is required to have this license. So that's, that's the reason we're doing it, is my understanding. And I've, I've reviewed it, and it's complete, and as long as the, the chief of police is fine, I am fine with this.
Yep, the paperwork's in order. Everything with the board of health is in order, so they're all ready to go.
Okay. Bill, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Would, any questions from the public? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the issuance of a common victular license to Smile Zone, LLC, DBA Menchies, Kingham Shipyard.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. COVID-19 update.
Unmute myself first. Sorry about that. Okay, so COVID-19 update for June 30th. In a letter to Massachusetts municipal officials today, the Department of Public Health stated that we have been successful in ensuring COVID-19 cases continue to trend downward due to the vigilance, the vigilance of our residents and our collective action in planning and preparation. Governor Baker has not yet announced a move to Phase Three of the state's reopening plan. The Commonwealth is taking a cautious and measured approach to reopening to ensure that we continue to see a decrease in positive cases. The DPH stated that moving too quickly, as we have seen in states like Florida and Arizona, has the potential to create a resurgence of the virus and burden the healthcare system. As of today, DPH is reporting 108,882 cases in Massachusetts, of which 8,684 are in Plymouth County. As of last Wednesday, the DPH was reporting 275 COVID-19 cases in the town of Hingham. The number of hospitalized COVID-19 patients, the percentage of people testing positive for COVID-19, and the number of COVID-19 deaths across the state do continue to decline at this time. And that's the entirety of the COVID-19 update, Mary.
Okay. Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom on the COVID-19 update?
None for me.
Bill, any questions?
I have no questions. I would just encourage folks to continue to stay vigilant. You know, one of the observations over the weekend, I know that a lot of folks are campaigning, but, you know, people are in close contact with each other, and, you know, folks are not, you know, although the, we get through the storm here in Hingham, just remind people to try to stay vigilant and keep themselves safe and their family safe.
That's right.
Here, here.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next item of business, public comment on items not on the agenda. Okay. Tom and Michelle, I don't believe we have any appointments.
No appointments.
Okay. Town administrator report. Tom?
I'd want to go to Michelle first. I don't know if she has any.
Oh, sure. Michelle?
Nothing, just a warm welcome to Bill. Looking forward to having you on the board this year.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Tom? Thanks for staying there. I forgot to go to Michelle first.
Nope, nope, that's all right. So I would just like to let everyone know that today was Rick Nowlan, our town, our longtime town assessor. Today was his last day of work. He is entering a well-deserved retirement, and we certainly wish him luck. You know, Rick has been a rock down there on that first floor for over 13 years. You know, knowing he was there just always, always gave everybody such a sense of, of security and knowing that the town was doing the right thing at the right time. So he'll be missed, but we're all very, very happy for him and hope that he is able to enjoy his retirement. The other thing I wanted to point out is, you know, we had, you know, everyone talked about town meeting and how well that went. We also had another big event on Saturday, and that was the town elections. And I would say that there's one very common thread that runs right through the middle of both of those events, and that's Eileen McCracken. You know, Eileen running these, these elections is not an easy task, and she does it with relative, seemingly, seeming what seems like easy. She makes it look easy, makes it look easy. But her and her team just do such wonderful work to make sure that these things always go smoothly for the town. So I just wanted to, you know, give her a shout out and, you know, remind everyone how lucky we are to have someone like Eileen McCracken running that office down there.
Thank you. Anything else, Tom?
That's what I had. Thank you.
Okay. Selectman reports. Joe?
Well, other people have stolen my thunder. I only had two comments. My first one was to welcome Bill as our new member on the Board of Selectmen. And my second one was to thank Eileen for the town elections, particularly handling, handling it in this COVID environment. Her work is impressive. Her team is impressive. Thank you. And then I guess my third is congratulations to the new chair of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. So, yeah, I would, I would say kind of ditto, ditto to, ditto to everything that has been covered. Bill, looking forward to, to working with you. I would also just give a shout out to everybody who ran for elected office this year. You know, the three of us know it's, it's not easy to kind of put yourself out there and under, you know, to be able to campaign during this pandemic was so unusual, and just really appreciate the continued, the continued willingness of citizens to contribute their time and talent to the town. Along those lines, I would just remind people that we are accepting talent bank applications. In addition to some of the committees, some of the standing committees having vacancies, we have to staff a public safety building committee, a senior center building committee, and a tree bylaw committee. Those three new committees in and of themselves, there are 19 seats that we, that we need to appoint. There are many wonderful volunteer opportunities in the town. What we try to do in, in conjunction with the moderator is to match people's interests and talents and availability of time with volunteer opportunities. There are some boards and committees that meet a couple of times a year. There are some that meet once a month. There are some that meet more frequently, and as a town that really does do a lot of its business with the assistance of volunteers, we just encourage people to do that. Sharon is, Bill and Joe, for, for your information, Sharon is compiling right now a list of all of, of all of the committees and boards and where things stand. We'll be reaching out to the moderator in short order to talk about how we do the interview process. But, you know, I'm in particular eager to get those building committees up and running because that work is both important and a little time sensitive. For members of the public who are interested, a talent bank application is found on the town website. There's a link in the menu or in, just in the search engine, you can just type in talent bank. You can fill it out online, and we would look forward to talking with you about ways to serve the town. So with that, I think, I think we've covered everything. Tom or Michelle, did we miss anything?
I think so.
Okay. If not, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
No, it's, it's your honor.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I didn't realize. I just have one question. So was the Trident application put off, or what happened to that?
Oh, Sharon, yes, please, Carol. They were not ready. And so when the agenda was posted on Friday, their paperwork wasn't in, but as you know, we want to try to be as responsive as we can. So we will, we are happy to take that up when, when they are ready and when the restaurant opening group thinks that they're ready to come before us.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bill, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.